He wouldn't, he wouldn't last very long.
Very long.
I'm gonna take care of the rest.
This is all in the Chinese Mission for Orders Due to April. July 13th, one page back, July 13th, 2021. James, you wish?
Come on, Father, we'd like to thank you for another day. Thank you, pray that we, that we come to this meeting, make the best decision for the kind of Jeff Davis today. That our voices be heard and that we make the right choices in Jesus' name, my friends.
Uh, Ray, you wish?
Let me pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment.
Gentlemen, it's been a while.
How are you?
I'm well, sir, and yourself?
Good.
Young lady, good to see you back.
Thank you, it's good to be there.
Good. Two things, road department. Have you all given any thought to hiring a subcontractor instead of trying to hire another head of the road department and maintaining staff? Several, most large businesses anymore are contracting on work such as this. And the simple reason is that it saves them a lot of money. Contractor screws up or doesn't do something right, it's their job to fix it. Didn't know if you'd consider that, I hope that you would. The second one is, I understand that several counties in the area are receiving stimulus money. I didn't know if Jeff Davis had received any or if any of it had been applied for, if there's an application necessary. Can somebody answer that?
That's right, yeah, we have received.
Pardon me, sir?
We have received one last year and we have received the next round. We have seen.
A portion of it. Okay, cool.
So, yeah, it's already been applied for, we're already.
Um, is it just going into the general budget?
Not sure, it has to be spent on certain things.
Okay, elaborate possibly?
Uh, hopefully you might elaborate, but.
Uh, the Treasury Department, I don't know if they've released their final rule yet. We've currently been operating off their interim final rule. Every webinar I attend, Mr. DeSousa, it seems like they restricted it a little bit more and a little bit more. Essentially, anything concerning COVID, counties can give hazard pay if they want to. For example, with the funds, uh, we could build actually a mental health facility if we wanted to. I mean, we don't, we didn't get enough money in Jeff Davis County, but a larger county could if they wanted to with those types of funds. So, anything COVID related is predominantly what it's thought to do for our county.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? We'll move on to item two, which is Memphis. So, after a motion of approval of June 8th, 2021, due to 15, 21, June 29th, 2021, made in Memphis.
How many motions?
Have a motion for Rick.
I'll say.
Second, laying in discussion. And now I call for a vote, everybody in favor raise your hand. Motion carries and answers. Mister, uh, first out is financials, uh, approval of monthly payments. Motion to approve paying monthly. Motion for James.
Second.
Second for Hank, this is in discussion. Carry now, I'll call for a vote, all in favor raise your hand. Motion carries and answers. Uh, Georgia Innocent Defense Service. Is everybody seeing that in the back?
It's just a yearly agreement to be able to continue to act.
So, I would need a motion to approve, or to sign for a yearly agreement. To approve. Got motion for James to approve.
I'll say.
Second for Lane to approve, that's in discussion. And now I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor raise your hand. Motion carries and answers. Berkesbury Landing. Had some, uh, thing, I reckon that's a discussion for release and resolutions of Berkesbury Landing. But I would like for us to table that till we get more information from the state on what they.
I actually have a little bit more information for you, you don't want to take away.
I will listen to you.
Okay, sure. So, Chelsea called Jeff Bishop, who is the coordinator of the program. And what he told her is to replace a portion or all of the vote round to achieve the correct slope at Berkesbury Landing. Get rid of any inconsistencies with the landing and to improve the parking area, so likely grade that put more pressure stone in. Uh, then apparently there's, uh, some drainage issues, water crossing the redways, and they would come in and they would fix that as well. And that is sort of the overarching idea. Jeff did say that they would know more if you all want to approve the resolution and go into the.
Have they committed to do that?
I don't know if they've committed to do it, but this was their thoughts and ideas from Jeff.
I mean, what I would like for them to do, just to just make the only one person, but before I would want to do it in any agreement, I would know, I would know their exact plans of that plan.
We need a proposal from them.
A proposal from them of what they want to do for the next 20 years out along the grid.
And the maintenance of that, so pressure stones gets washed away, they clear the damage, they maintain it, it's not an issue. It would be theirs for that part, but you're here to address it, this is what.
So, I'd like to make, myself, I'd like to make a motion to table this till we get more information on it.
I'll say.
I got a motion from me, I got a second from Lane, does anybody have any discussion? And now I'll call for a vote to table this till further day. All in favor raise your hand. Motion carries and answers. Uh, next on the agenda is DNR grant for towns below the trails. Just goes DNR grant, a four pound below.
So, DNR has released a round of grants for basically trail maintenance, building new trails, trail rehabilitation. Uh, towns above qualifies for this, even though it's technically DNR property. So, essentially what we're wanting to do, Ramona and I have listened to the webinars, we've read up on the materials. I reached out to the regional commission, who writes a lot of grants, and they said they would be happy to write the grant at no charge. Only caveat, of course, would be if the grant was funded, they would take the administration fee, which is typical. Um, and so at this point in time, this is simply asking you all if we had your approval to move forward with the regional commissions around the grant.
So, I would need a motion for, hopefully, if staff to move forward with getting us around further trails at town.
Somebody got a motion?
A motion from Hank.
Second.
A second from Rick, is there any more discussion on that? Here now, I'll call for a vote, everybody in favor raise your hand. Motion carries and answers.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, I have updates. Uh, first on the list is our EMS director, Rondro.
Gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to come, I think this is a good idea, uh, to give you an update on what's going on in each department. I fixed you a little bit of what we're talking about. I came in and I looked at the calendar, the, uh, the agenda, and it showed on the updates who all was going to be speaking. I'm glad you got it in the order important, because I saw I was first and you made it ready for third, that just got me a little idea about it. Uh, what I've noticed, kind of just fixed you up a little bit of the timeline, not necessarily dates, but from January of 2021 to the present. Uh, kind of you get an update where we are with the annual service of this, it's old hat, and a lot of things. Uh, though you know pretty much what's happened. But when we started out this year, we started out just about like any other year. Everything was running pretty smooth, we had full staff and paramedics. We did have one paramedic at the time that was out with a worker's cough injury. But we had all, the rest of the staff was there, we also had four ALS trucks running, it was a good and accountable, uh, condition. No problems going on with that and the other, with just maintenance. As far as EMS staff, we were all happy and content in our workplace home over here on Jeff Davis Street. Uh, everything was fine, we responded all the 911 calls, we were making transfers for Jeff Davis Hospital, business as usual. Everything was fine. But it didn't take long to get started into the year that when we started having problems. Matter of fact, a few weeks into it, first of all, I came down with COVID, hospitalized for 15 days. The Saturday night before I was coming home from the hospital, Sunday, uh, if everything had gone good, it was going good, I was going to get discharged. Well, Saturday afternoon, somewhere, I don't know what time it was now, six, five, six, seven o'clock, I started receiving phone calls at the hospital that our building was on fire. I was hoping it wasn't going to be too terrible, bad, uh, thinking that we were in a vulnerable building and we would be okay. Well, as the phone calls came through, I could tell it was getting worse and we had a major issue. That fire destroyed our building, destroyed our trucks, uh, some of our equipment, uh, destroyed the 911 center and also the EMA. So, therefore, we were all kind of just thrown out of, uh, just lost at that point in time. The team that was working, uh, the staff that was there, the workers for EMS, besides myself, I was not able to be there. Uh, actually, came here that night, uh, what was going on, to try to keep everything put together and such as that. We had ambulances coming from Coffee County and Apple County immediately to help us to make sure we weren't going to miss any calls. Uh, and we appreciate all of that. But we were all devastated about our, our damage and being run out. But we were relocated over at the fire department at their training center. And I tell you, when we got over there, we couldn't ask for any better hosts. They took care of our needs, they tried to help all they could at their department to make sure we were comfortable. But even though we were there and they were nice and such as that, we were in one big room, we had to use mattresses on the floor, beds, everything was in one room. Our, our food, our supplies that we could salvage, and such as that. And you're talking about a coed group, and you got people that have been working together, you have the privacy in that particular area. We were proud to be there, but what I'm getting at is during that time, none of the folks really troubled about that or had any complaints. We were all satisfied, everybody was safe, we were able to continue business, and I appreciate all of that. Uh, after about a month or so of fire department, we were moved to our Utopary Home now over on Walden Street. We purchased this, uh, mobile home, we got it set up. Uh, it's, it's, uh, we're, we're glad to be there, we've got a little bit more privacy, we definitely don't have the roof that for the temporary, and we're, we're pleased to have that and we thank you for that. We were also permitted, permitted to go ahead and order us four ambulances, and that's what we've done, we've ordered four medics and ambulances. Uh, we're still waiting on them to get here, for their, the wheels are turning supposedly, but just not turn very fast. Over the seven month period, Jeff Davis has lost four paramedics. Uh, three of them, they went to different counties, back to their home counties, and one went to a retirement and actually went from a full-time status to a part-time status. Uh, and then the lady that saw my worker's cough, she has not been released to come back and work yet, so therefore we wanted this. We've already been leasing ambulances, uh, to help us get through the time, the rough time. We appreciate everyone that gave us an ambulance from other parts of the counties and such as that. Uh, but a lot of our ambulances, as you know, we've been seeing on the emails that's been sent out over these past few months, that we've had in the mechanic shop. Just about as much as we've been having, right, cost of the smudge on the piers and such as that. And, uh, I'm not kicking any gift horse in the mouth, and we appreciate one that lets out, but it's not top of their top trucks. It's all these trucks that they now offline or whatever, but they're racing up to let's borrow. But so far, not fire, any kind of mechanical problems or staffing problems, it's kept Jeff Davis County EMS from missing any 911 calls. We have responded even the night of the fire call come in, we had a unit ready to go, and we didn't miss a call. As far as the county, we took care of it, we had personnel, uh, people ready to work, and we had at least a unit to do that. So, we have done really good with that, I think we've done good. Jeff Davis County has always been, we've always prided ourselves in taking transfers for our hospital. Over the years as I've been here, very seldom do we ever have to lose a transfer, uh, because of a problem of a count or staff. We always had something ready to get. If they left Jeff Davis Hospital by ground, Jeff Davis EMS carried it. Well, since all of this, it didn't happen that way anymore. We've lost some transfers due to the fact that we could not leave the county unmanaged. We had to keep at least a running truck in the county to run our 911 calls, and we had to farm out a lot of our transfers from our hospital. That's doing that, that costs revenue for the county, it's frustrating to the hospital, it's longer delays for them to get people out of here. And we apologize for that, and there's certain things that you just can't help, but that's had to be done. Where are we now? Well, since you passed the, the budget this year, I'm proud to say that I've got two brand new paramedics that's coming on full time. One, uh, or is scheduled to come on full time, one's going to be full time actually in August, the other, we hope will be ready to come on in September if nothing goes wrong. And we're also in the process, we've got to hire in an EMT, a advanced, uh, EMT, and he should start this week with his orientation. Right now, we have a used box, a used box style EMS ambulance over there, it's orange and white, uh, that we're using. And it's a used, uh, ambulance, but it is running right now. And we also have a brand new hot off the press, a signal line transit van that we are using, which both of these are being leased. But at least we've got one brand new ambulance that we can use. We also have, when the fire came, we saved one ambulance, the only ambulance we had that ambulance, it was sitting outside of the bay. We actually was trying to sell that ambulance at the time. But since fire came, we ended up keeping that unit, uh, it's the oldest truck we've had. Uh, we've been running it pretty hard and heavy, used to it was every fourth date, now it's about every date. It's just put more wear and tear on it to this day, to the point now that it really needs to be used just for backup and along transfers. But we still have that truck available. And two, Senator Blake Tilery has been instrumental in trying to help us locate some ambulance over the last couple of weeks. I think you found out earlier that it wasn't as easy to do just signing ambulance on every quarter like we were. But he has gotten contact, he'll just get contact, I believe it's going to be Southside Ambulance Service, I'm not 100% sure, but it's a group out of Savannah that are bringing us, uh, as soon as all the legal papers and all getting finished up, we should have two ambulances brought to us for us tomorrow. They're not leasing them to us, they're going to service tomorrow, so that's a, and should, and the director told me that it was going to be good ambulance, if they're not sending us something that we need to kind of intend, we're going to have trouble. So, anyway, we're hoping to have that going, uh, here with us in just a little bit, maybe by the end of this week, I was looking for them by the end of last week, but something has put a wrench into spokes and got it slowed down, but we hope to have two units to be used. Our units, to give you an update on what we've ordered, we've ordered these medics ambulances. When we looked at those trucks, when we went out looking, we found those trucks, we actually liked the ambulances, it was, you know, hopefully we were going to win the proposal with those guys, and we did. But one of the things that they were told us, and I'm, I'm just being honest with you on straight up, the guy, our salesman told us that he had chassis on the ground at the time. And with those chassis, he had three production spots ready to go to put us in, and hopefully we can have trucks within 90 days. Well, since the purchase was made and such as that, 90 days have come and gone. My next target date was going to be in August. With all, they're telling me it's COVID and chip related stuff now, that's the best, the best excuse I can get from them, they're behind. I called, they told me it's not going to be August, best bet now may be October. I had pleaded with these folks and tried to explain to them our desperate need, I said, we're not just replacing the ambulance, we need a fleet of ambulance, hours are burned, I'm not just replacing an old ambulance. Some sort of professional, uh, professional courtesy should have been, could be given to us to get us up in the line. All I'm getting is, well, we're going to try, but I'm not getting anywhere with it, and it looks like that, the target date's still going to be October. But anyway, we hopefully will have brand new trucks by October, if not before. And how strong is EMS now? I've been working here now for, with EMS, about 26 years. Jeff Davis County's been some, been actually through some rough times over the last seven months. And he, we may not be as strong as we once were, but we're stronger than we were at the time of the fire. And in time, we're going to be even stronger, and that's the way I feel. It's kind of like the State of the Union of the President, when he gives that, he says, the State of the Union is strong, we're stronger than we were, and we're actually anticipating to be much better. And if you would, just to give you an idea of what we do, we're not setting them there to whittle their thumbs, even if we don't make a transfer. If you look on the COVID chart that I drew before, as the, uh, the EMS report, it shows you the, the January, February, March, April, May, and June and July. And July is up to date as of yesterday. It lets you see how many calls and what type of calls we responded to. The first one's going to be your non-transports, that's where we go, we get a call to a, to a residence or a scene or whatever, we get there, and the patient does not live with us in the hospital for whatever reason, they refuse. If you look at your blood draw, that, that's, I think there was a question on that before when I went into here, but blood draws is where we have to do what just basically says, draw blood from the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, or State Patrol. The next is the assist, that's pretty much where we go, where Randy is falling, just needs lift assistance. And we have to still respond to them, uh, help them get back up and such as that. You can see how many of those calls we do per month, or we've done per month, and how many we towed out. Out of town trips, that's where we went to the house, picked up the patient, and then we wanted to go to Idaria or do a good service, or either transferred out of the hospital. All of those are in, uh, putting together, so there's your numbers that we, we're there. And even with, with the downtime that we've had, if you look, we've had at least 212, uh, and we've had a couple since I, that were fully put, so we, we're 215, 216, something like that so far. Out of all our calls, you see that that's called going to be trauma, that's any type of trauma, it can be a wreck, it can be a, a broken arm, a cut, or whatever the case may be. But at least you see kind of what we're responding to, medical's the same thing, sick, uh, weak, seizures such as that. Your cardiac, and your next call is where dispatch some sort of chest pain, uh, or something along that way, it could be from a heart attack, or just people feel bad in the chest, maybe not even a heart, actual heart attack, but anyway, it's cardiac, something going on. We're running those many calls over in ACLS, that's your max cardiac life support. Uh, your BLS is your basic life support, where you don't have to give administer drugs or, or have a call, so it sounds like you don't have to administer any type of drugs, it's something that, uh, that a lower level appear to be giving. Uh, and then mobile calls, that's when the ambulance is on the call, and another call comes in before it gets cleared off that one, that somebody has to wait. So, you'll see on all of those, uh, we've run, we've run total calls somewhere, it's about 15 to 10, 1500 to 10 as of today, but when I left the office somewhere that night. So, that's where we're at with the calls, we're staying busy, uh, whether or without real higher equipment and such as that. Uh, there's one thing for sure, that if EMS gets a call for a 911 call, they're going to be responding. I can't tell you what truck's going to pull up, what name that truck may be, the only thing I can just about guarantee you 100% is it's going to be a Jeff Davis crew that gets out of there. Now, only a few things I'm going to bring up, so that's the needs of Jeff Davis EMS. Naturally, we need a couple more people to pull, let our staff pull, and I'm hoping that's shortly going to come, I'm hoping we can have some more before that's locked. We would like to have our, our new building as soon as we can, to give us some more room. Kind of own each other there when it comes to doing reports or, or any kind of, if there should be any, no losses in there. We need to have a building as quickly as we can. Naturally, we want our new ambulances, and a couple pieces of equipment that we need, uh, that we'd like to have, and we've talked about this before, maybe if you kind of give me some guidelines on where we're at, what we should have or whatever, just the Lucas devices and the cardiac monitors. That's pretty much the life of EMS. Call, if I said something, you call, we call, and that's what we do. Well, where we were at with that, the crews, if I was a little correct, we were trying to check, make sure we were sold for by the, that we did.
I seem to do it. Going down, we're already.
I think we let it do it, I mean, we look back at the news.
If it turned out to be a social.
Yes, I teach day morning to look at them.
Just look at the minutes and confirm.
Yeah, ambulance is sold, yeah.
And we did, I'll present that to you next day, so I simply got away.
You have any questions for me?
Cardiac monitors, uh, we don't have any?
Yeah, we have, we have two. If we need anything, if, if you were going to say buy one or the other, that's a need right this minute, the Lucases would be what we need. Uh, we've got cardiac monitors for our trucks now, with a few trucks coming in, and all the others are gone. I'll, those, when I need those two monitors to go on the two trucks, give you the total four trucks.
Or four units per truck, how many did we have before? We have two before.
No, we have two cardiac and two.
And these four.
No, we only need two.
Two Lucas.
Two Lucas.
That's one thing.
Yeah, it was two of two.
We were looking at the process to make sure that we told them.
Oh, okay, okay, then we do that.
Yeah, man, we need to do that, or we need to learn the rescue plan correctly, so we have a way.
Now, if you, if you want to get a smaller, that would be fine.
I, I would love for you to have ten if you need them, but we have to figure out a way to pay for all these.
Well, the cardiac monitors will be utilized every call just about you want, so I need them on the trucks. And what we plan to do with the Lucases is transfer it on one truck, the call truck, and then the next ship do the same thing, you can rotate it around.
I'm pretty sure we voted, if we did.
We did, we, we better to do this.
Can, can we, can we, uh, redo that, we're not sure right now?
If you want to just make sure, I don't have any problem with just going ahead with it, just to make sure.
So, y'all want to, let's re-vote that, just to make sure, to go ahead with the purchase of the two Lucas and the two cardiacs. I think we already have, but let's just confirm it and play on how we move on with it. Make a motion, got a motion from Hank. Second from Hank is the inordinate discussion. All in favor raise your hand. Motion carries and answers. I brought security. Thank you. Second on the list is, uh, Minister Frager, Mr. Frager.
I'm sorry, I'm, if you don't.
They say, they say the best for last.
And y'all will take one and pass it down. So, this will be a little bit brief, um, I'll go ahead and say number two, since y'all, yeah, don't want to finish with the financials, but number two, road department ETV. Uh, this is to be used for road and pedestrian, well, roadway and pedestrian roadway maintenance in towns above area. The lowest quote that we received was from Almondia Outdoors for $9,300, this was a four-wheel drive Polaris. And based on the previous meeting where you all went and gave me the authority to place that order, that order's been placed, and Almondia Outdoors told us we have about a month's wait. Um, but again, this will be used in the towns above area for road maintenance and pedestrian, uh, roadway maintenance. Now, jumping back up to the first point, financial status, um, we're 100% of fiscal year 2021 completed. I will say that these numbers may change a little bit, because the accountants will come in and they'll make sure any mistakes that have been, may have been fixed, and then they'll close out the year, so these numbers may flush away a little bit. But nonetheless, revenue compared to last year, well, June 2021, year-to-date ending, our revenue was. our revenue was nine-million-fourty-seven-thousand-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and ninety cents, or in other words, ninety-point-four percent of what we projected. And June of twenty-twenty, that was ten-million-one-hundred-four-thousand-six-hundred-forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents, or a hundred-and-two-point-one percent of what was projected. So we.
And I said that will be changed dramatically, because everything has not been, since I went out, everything has not been approved. And so that will change, and they will. You will, you will have the, or actually have over what predicted, how you were.
Sure. We're gonna skip on that to expenses compared to last year, June 2021, so this prior month, our expenses was nine-million-ninety-three-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents, or nine-point-three percent of what we budgeted. And June of 2020, that ending was nine-million-eight-hundred-thirty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents, or ninety-nine-point-four percent of what was budgeted. So currently, we have spent seven-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents to last fiscal year 21, that will be added fiscal year 2020. Again, these numbers may fluctuate that.
That's a good problem, so let's don't put that.
Yeah.
That's not gonna change.
Good.
Unless, you know, I'm here, so too.
There may be some utility deals.
It ain't gonna change.
No, it's not gonna change that way.
I don't know, we're down appropriate.
That's it for Mr. Trump.
All right, next and final on the list is our county attorney, Mr. Andrew Ryan. I'd like to say, we're the suit on, we say the best for last. Okay, so, I guess we'll start out with roads. I give you since the last time, River Run Road, y'all knew that was one that y'all wanted to take in. And I told you in my last update that I had looked into researching that this lady lives in Florida owned that road. And so I mailed her two letters to the same address that she gets her tax bill for that road before. And I've still asked her to email me, call me, and I still haven't got any response from her at all. So I'm just letting y'all know that I sent her two letters to that address, and still have not received any contact from her. I don't know if that means she doesn't want to do it, or if that's a bad address, but that's all I have for her. So I don't know if somebody else knows her, or knows somebody that knows her, that we might figure out another way to get in touch from her, but.
But she does pay her tax bill. I'm assuming, so.
I mean, I guess that's, that's the address I sent to was the one where she gets her tax bill. So I would assume that's her address. But anyway, so I really don't know what else to do on that one until, because we've gotta get. We've gotta get a deed from her, because she owns that road, and pays taxes on the road only. For the other road closure, as you know, we just got rid of the Morris Road, Paint Road.
You're probably gonna tell us this, but I'm assuming whoever owns each side is gonna get half that road. They're gonna start paying taxes on it, are aware of that?
So, it's my opinion that if they won't, if my understanding, all those roads are prescribed title roads, meaning, I don't think there's ever been a deed to the county necessarily. So the county just started maintaining those roads, so it's pretty restricted even. If, it's my opinion that if those people, if it was a title road, I think we have an obligation. There's a whole different scenario, and we gotta give them title rights back. For scriptive roads, they want a quick claim deed from us. My opinion, or my position is, we'll sign a deed, but they need to pay it. Yeah, that's kind of their obligation, pay that deed and give us a period. But what I was planning to do with regard to those is to, is I talked to Miss Susie, let her know that now those, those roads need to be, I guess, annexed in such to, to who, so that those people are paying taxes on that road. So I'll get with her and see, I just, that's kind of next step in the process. So hopefully, I'll give y'all another update next meeting as far as where we're at in that regard. But I did wanna talk to you about, just see if any of y'all had any update about the Earth Street Lane? That was another one that y'all had, remember, that was the one that Sheriff indicated there was an issue with Google and nine-one-one, and I hadn't heard anything back on that one, so just letting y'all know.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, we just, Sheriff spoke.
Keep trying to work on trying to.
So, okay, well, I just wanted to, from my perspective, I'm just kinda sitting still on that one until I heard, hear something different. The other one I had was a Leslie Road. Y'all familiar with Leslie Road?
That is the road between the Comelissa Hall and the Hazel Street about off the Bronson Highway, that circles back up.
That's already there, yeah.
And that's what I was gonna say.
They already own that one.
I had got a note here where, and it must have been banned on there, that said that that road.
I remember it was abandoned after the year to the county.
But it's never.
Deeded back.
But it's never been deeded back.
So we still, so we still own it.
It's the county's fault.
County's fault.
Well, I mean, you shouldn't let nobody put a gap on your road. It's always, it's like, it's part of county road.
So I guess I just was trying to get some direction from y'all, ladies. I had to research necessarily to see this, but I think the band was the one that told me that the county owns that road. So I'm not sure if we own the road, what steps we need to take from the start.
It's on the tax side, yes.
Yeah.
But we own the road.
So was the proposal for us to take it back, or do we want to own the road?
Probably, thank you.
We never closed, it ain't never closed.
They taped it on one end and gave it on the other, well, what was it, on the back? What was the proposal?
But co-floated by landowner, and on the top, on the other side.
But he didn't own the.
Now, you take it back.
But he owned, but he didn't own the lane. He didn't own the road.
He closed. Kind of a closed beginning.
I guess, it's my question, county already owns?
It's gonna take long, I'm fixing to buy.
I know y'all previously voted on it, but it's kind of what we talked about, so.
So is he paying taxes on, or do we not?
No, he wasn't paying that.
No, he's not paying taxes.
But we won't let him keep it, then he will be paying taxes on.
Well.
But we don't want it back.
No, it's ours.
It's your road.
It's our road.
And we, y'all, I'm assuming y'all have to abandon the process.
No, it wasn't.
Not how long ago this was.
This is way before anybody said.
Okay, okay.
Saying nobody own this thing, I don't think.
So I guess, and y'all have to make a decision on this, but I'm just saying, that's the only one that I kinda had out there floating that I was trying to figure out which way to go. Are we gonna try to abandon it?
No, he wants it open.
We want it, okay.
It ain't never been closed.
Yeah, it sounds to me.
So I guess all we technically would have to do is.
We gave it, we gave it up.
If the county didn't put them out there, he'd be doing something against the law. That's right.
But I was out there.
But he'd be doing something against the law. And they weren't.
And they were just recently, they was like.
But let's test it, you mean I could walk there to Marcell Road and put a cable up?
I would like you could.
Against the law.
If it's our road still, and he wants us to take it back again, and he's still gotta gate it up.
I would not gate it up anymore.
Oh, it's not, okay, okay. I was thinking, so first.
How long has it been since it's been traveled?
Well, I don't know. According to the regulators, probably oh-five.
Yeah.
Ten, fifteen, twenty years.
That wasn't deed, it's closed, that wasn't deed.
Well, if you want me to.
He thought it probably, that deed is back, he put it. This, I don't check the registry, it's on.
They never done a paper.
Yeah, it's been since the night.
I don't even know what y'all talking about.
Me neither, y'all talking. That's cause it really, it's really never been a road. It was deeded, but it was never.
It's never made a road.
Well, no, it was partially made a road, okay? Back in them days, it wasn't quite as strict as it is now. It goes right down between the church and the.
The Comelissa Hall.
Yeah.
It's in his district.
And right back around, it comes out behind that dirt road that's back behind J K. It joins into, joins that dirt road behind J K.
I got suggestions, won't we let the man who's in his district decide what he wants?
Yeah, I don't mind us taking it, I just don't think we should incur any expense to take it. To get it back to county standards, because we didn't close it, he did, and let it roll up. So if he's willing to pay. Yes, it's gonna need ditching and re surrounding, and probably, what I'm guessing, get you loads of dirt or more.
So why do we want it?
Hank, you don't understand, it's already ours.
Right, so that's.
He just wants to open it, and I start to maintain.
So why don't we?
Why wasn't closed? And I said it's fine, you know, I'm glad to do that, but he needs to get it back to our state.
But why wasn't closed, stop, you know?
I ain't got, we got.
Why didn't he want to open back up?
I think we'll sell property.
And some homes have already been moved back in that area. Shoot. Another city, we get one of our road guys to go out there. We've done did that. Okay, I have.
What's going on, what's going on? Get some proposals.
I might want to do a table, that might take a ride out and look at it before they can meet and get back on.
Y'all wanna talk to Luke, to tell you exactly what's gonna take this back in?
I tell you, some kind of estimate of what, whether the county.
Y'all, we already got it.
You do that, okay.
What's our, if we don't want it? Pay it over, pay it over, then you start paying taxes on it.
We can go through the abandonment process with that road. I mean, it's already been abandoned, I mean, he closed it, but we would go through that same process.
I don't have a problem with dealing with it. I mean, he needs it be open, because it is his property. I just don't want to incur expense, expense of getting back to our specs.
If he wants us to take that road back, let him get it back to our specs, and we'll sell the road back. We don't, we don't want.
I totally agree.
Well, and can somebody, has somebody already relayed that message to him?
Not aware of it.
If somebody does, I'm gonna put that on my list of, I'm waiting till I hear back from y'all on that one.
Okay.
I did not have on my list the one that Mr. Luke talked about, Valley Road.
It's been probably five, six months ago, we talked about it out there, and we were gonna make sure he on both sides of it, see what kind of conditions the road was in, to see if it was a road that we wouldn't incur a bunch of expense to take back over, because he did actually build that road into there, and it just kinda.
It says we have to make the counties pay.
That's right. And he says it does, but somebody's supposed to ride there and take a look at it.
That's right. So do I need to still, y'all haven't voted to do anything on Valley Road yet.
We have voted, if anything, we want.
Other than to look at it.
You think he's a broker? So as far as from what I'm doing on Valley Road, I'm just waiting to hear back from y'all.
Whether we want it or not.
Okay, that's making sure. I just wanna, that's everything I know that I was supposed to be doing for roads. So is that, and this kind of thing, I just wanna make sure we.
Oh, no, 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 there was a part you were supposed to do on Valley Road. First of all, make sure that the county hit on just the same situation we got here, make sure it is indeed is and it does on both sides of it.
Can we vote on that right now, voting them rooms if they need county specs to accept them? I would wait.
So make sure.
I don't want those, I mean, aren't my way.
If it's, no, our plan is not being weird, if it ain't. He should, he should not have closed, is all I think.
All right, so on to the next subject that I have, and this is the final one, and this is trash. I just wanted to give you, that day I did receive an email from the gentleman with the EPD that says that the household garbage has been removed from Mr. King's property. That, remember, we had given him so much time to get that that has been done, and he's checked in that, that Mr. King was very responsive, and that he has applied for a permit by rule to collect and transport household garbage. And that his application was approved by our permitted unit, so Mr. King is now legal to collect and transport trash. He did also say that Mr. King is aware by the NOB, notice violation, that he can only transport garbage to permitted waste handling facility. And in response to my question, I think there was, you know, an issue about, if Mr. King were to go to one of our facilities and dump, when he shouldn't, he's supposed to be going to the transfer station, you know, how does that affect us? And he said that they looked into it, and that their position that it's not really the county's job, since it's an EPD issue, to verify everybody that comes out there, to see if they got permit or not. But he said, he ended his email saying, but I'm gonna reach out to Mr. King, make sure he understands, he can't do that. So if he's not, if he's going out, his old trash, now he can take. But if he's going out to collect everybody else's trash, he's having to take to the transfer station. He has a permit now, so I'm not sure, I'm just letting y'all know that he's got a permit. As far as the ordinance, I'm still looking into that as far as the correct process to make sure I can change the ordinance. Just what we're gonna do is we're gonna specifically say in our ordinance that, that if you were, if you were collecting, and you're in the business of collecting garbage, that you couldn't use a local dump, you had to go to the transfer station. So I'll get back to y'all on that.
What you're saying, he is legal to continue right now, as long as he uses transfer.
Yes, he has a permit, according to this guy, he got approved.
Is that right trailer, you know, holding on?
I'm assuming he does.
It's not us to make that judgment.
Yeah, and again, that's what, yeah, that's what they say, they say that's our, they will monitor from now on. Yeah, they're the monitoring agents.
So given that, hopefully, can we somehow get the word to all our dumpster monitor people that should someone come up fitting that description, that they want to let you know? Well, they need EPD handle, we just need to know. And I've heard about the monitor one out there, so that's the one he uses. I don't understand how.
See, I guess that's true, the guys out there just need to know that listeners, I'm not just a.
Trailer load trash.
Yeah, the trailer load trash, that they're supposed to go to the transfer station. I think that'll solve it, I'll keep with the ordinance, if y'all want me to go ahead, I think y'all want to do that. So I'll keep working on that part. That's all I got.
Thank you. What about the Pope Hill, you heard anything about the Pope Hill?
I got a deal from Mr. McCray, but luckily, I told him that nothing had went, so they said they were gonna postpone it. But I still haven't heard anything else back from Mr. McHale, so it's completely in his court now. I don't know anything else, so.
All right, we'll go on to unfinished business. Fairground building named opposite. We'll discuss the renamed buildings at Jeff Davis County Fairground.
I brought that up, and it's, I guess it's not really renamed, because it's considered, but just that building, like, we have the entertainment plaza, but since, I always thought, since this V H Claxton had a lot of, in fact, I think they incorporated it from the fairground, he was a resident agent. Since he had a lot of influence on that building, I thought we should just put a sign on saying that we want to the fairground, we're gonna have an event at the V H Claxton building, you know what I'm saying? Just the fairground as a whole, you got the halls, and I mean, the.
That's right.
And then you got the other part over there, that Mr. Timmy Riley had a lot to do with, the old historic structure. For the halls, I'm thinking about Mr. Rudolph Kerry, you know what I'm saying, I don't know if you know it. But he had a lot to do with that, I mean, that part of the fairground. So it'd still be the fairground as a whole, but just.
Just naming the building, just that building. They put a sign. And I totally agree with you, I think that V H Claxton does need to be honored. But I'm wanting to say, is there something in our policy about that?
I was brought up one time, that they didn't want to name buildings because of favoritism.
Yeah, I think the trend is generally not necessarily naming buildings, but maybe putting an embryo or a dedication.
A plaque or a dedication. Dedicate the building in.
And then you have dedications there on the end, or black outside.
But not necessarily naming the buildings, because, you know, you hurt somebody's feelings, and they, well, I built that building, why did they put it by name?
So what I'm asking is, is there a policy, or is it just?
I mean, so you name a park, what's this, you name a park.
Well, that's.
I'm with you. You name a park, you can name.
You name, you can name a park, you can name a.
How we name our building?
We just name, or, or that collar, or that collar, Mr. Roberts or something, I go on, Bison Highway, what that called?
That's Long Rock Park.
Long Rock Park.
Yeah.
I mean, I, fuck that shit. You know, I'm, I'm calling.
And then if it is, I mean, if it is a policy, I might need to find and then look at it and.
Let's tell you that, cause I, I'm like James, I mean, I think Mr. V H needs some recognition out there, but, I mean, I don't do anything against policy, but if we can, I would like to do something. If, if it's nothing but. Like, like they said, put a, put a plaque out there, maybe a V H class or something, we, we, I like that stuff.
And just to your, your point, isn't there a plaque out there at the recreation park that says Alfred Big Rock Park or whatever it is?
It used to be, now the one out, at Dixon is, is Long Rockers, Alfred's is dead.
Yeah, 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 that's my opinion.
There used to be one out there, but I don't know if it's still there or not.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm checking, I'm, I'm. The park on three forty one, where they, that used to be Alfred.
I remember there used to be some. A bomber park.
Yeah, what was the sign, what was the sign? A lot of rocks, that, that dedication, I guess.
Or would that policy?
It always look, see.
I'm, I'm more than that.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, we, we take that to next week. I mean, cause if it's a policy, then we might need to look at it or.
Change policy.
Yes. Just the whole, come on, it's a deal, it's not.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, let's just don't do anything against policy, too, right now, we're not making any of that work. All right. So on to unfinished business we have, any new or old business?
The only new business I have is that, uh, the sheriff is wanting us to remind everybody about, uh, the groundbreaking for the new jail on Thursday, July fifteenth, at five.
Everybody hear that, I heard what the jail's about, it's about people.
July fifteenth. July fifteenth, it's Thursday, at five.
You get an invite that time?
Excuse me?
You get an invite off there?
Yeah, press the call.
Okay, I got it, in the paper.
Mr. Chairman, I do have an item, um, as y'all probably know, uh, in this get curbed, we passed away over the weekend with the sheriff's department, his funeral is tomorrow, the viewing is actually tonight. Um, I would like to propose the idea of us lowering all the flags, have them ass on county property tomorrow, since it's his funeral.
Absolutely, we won't need to vote on that a little bit, I think, I, I, that's, that's another brand for me, I think. Absolutely. In flag we go.
I got some old business, Sue, you wanna tell us about the trailer we talked about, the abandoned process out there? Go ahead, come on.
On the two mobile homes on the, uh, Bell Telephone Road, um, I bought them in my tax sale for October the fifth. Mr. Ira has promised me he is gonna bid on them and buy them. And so they'll be his that day, he'll be owner of those mobile homes. So, um, I was asked yesterday, could I, um, give him a deadline to move those mobile homes, but I don't have that right. The only thing I can do is collect the taxes and the collection.
I would pay the man owns the two for a time.
Yeah, he owns the land, but he don't own the mobile homes. And it's those two on the front, that brown one and the other one. And he says there's five in there already there, who wants to do this way, but he can't afford the two at a time. But, um, anyway, so, um, I think, um, me and Ricky was talking, um, you know, I can't, and I, I talked to Andy today, you know, I can't make him, um, give him a certain time to move those mobile homes or repick them, um. He's been talking to Buck, um, and the last time, well, I talked to him the other day, but the last time I had talked to him about these mobile homes, he was gonna refurbish them.
What's gonna refurbish, yeah?
Right there.
Oh, only things, you know, I think we, uh, on our policy.
See them trailers they left, and they, I think one of them was somebody else's name or something, they just left abandoned on there, and then I saw that, I was like, sixty dollar.
And I've taken them to tax sale before.
I'm glad, what you say, they gonna do them there?
Yeah, I've taken them to tax sale before, and they been a no sale. So, he's been talking to Buck, so I had already turned over my, my sale, and Buck called me, and I said, if you'll find out from him that he promised me he'll buy these, because, you know, there's a, there's a fee when I turn them over, by the time I put the fee on there to collect them, and then we run them in the paper for four weeks, it's about three hundred dollars, so he's agreed to pay that. So, above of what the taxes and everything is, so.
Well, what I was saying is, with you, after that, cause he's gonna redo them there, but our policy that we have in effect right now would not allow them mobile homes to be used to transported to another area of Jeff Livers County, because they will not make the.
They're not living.
Right.
The only.
So they either have to be redone there, or they'll have to be disposed of, but.
And what I told Sue, whether, I mean, we really don't know who's gonna be the owner until the sale, but once the sale happens, at that point, kind of, we could follow up.
Did you say, did you say there's fees or something too, Sue?
Yeah, you know, one time, at one meeting, y'all decided to, um, take off the interest part of it.
Pay the taxes, excuse me.
Okay, and I never did convey that to him, because he kinda quit calling and all that stuff, so he don't know that part yet. But when I do my sale, I'm gonna have to collect that, and then, you know, Ricky and, um, said that, you know, y'all might can hold that, but y'all release the.
So he wants a timeframe, how long he's got to have them redone, is that what you're asking?
No, we got some taxpayers that's want.
Taxpayer won't know, don't we give him a deadline to get his trailer remodeled, no, they been out there for several years. Won't we see who buys them first, then, then we can decide, we'll give them any day.
We can give them a deadline.
But I think they done, they done built up sale one time, man, nobody, I can't give them away.
But that, that was my point, plus we've got a mobile home park, ordinance that deals specifically with mobile home parks and that, and so, one, once the, my, my fault was, once the sale goes through, we know who the owners are. The new owner, assuming it's him, or somebody else might show up here, we don't know, but whoever it is, once we know they have a new owner, then we can send him a letter, or and say, hey, you got so many days to do this, at that point, kind of, but like Hank said, we can't give anybody, because they don't know who's buying them or did. We think it might be him, but we can't, like, sure, somebody else might show up and deal with it.
Might have to be. Yeah, I agree with that, so y'all do that, there's way to see the lies, and then we'll work to give them a.
Cause if we went through the abandoned process, we went to a class about that, and that would take another year for that to go through. So for me to put it back in the tax sale, he could get it, he'll have ownership of that mobile home that day, in October, October the fifth.
Any other new road business?
Hold it, hold it, I hold it. Only these house trucks. If, if the county's selling a house truck on taxes, or any piece of property, if it's no sale, don't the county retain the ownership? That's all I gotta say.
If you bid it in, you know.
But, 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 but it's got to be, I mean, if they left it, I would think it would, if, if the county owns the taxes, they owe the county, it would have to become the county.
You know, I, we don't try to give them away out there, we don't get nobody.
But I'm just saying, though, if it left it, thus just destroy it before I try and say.
Actually, I think you took a bid on, like you could say, the county bids.
I'll bid on my.
Whatever the county taxes bid, yeah, you could get rid of the, then the county would have to pay the, tear them down, if you wanted to go down there.
I, I hope that if nobody buys them, they still won't, the county owns them if they own the.
If they do.
So what you're trying to say is, if, if, if there's a county sale on taxes, and nobody bids on dirt, on dirt, now property, could we get the land? So, 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 so we got to pick and choose, so we, the county can pick and choose if we want it or don't, is that what you're saying?
You have to bid on that, if you have.
Well, have the county wound up?
But my, but you ain't got no question yet, if the county, if they own, if they owe the county the money, and the county's selling, the county take possession.
I think you gotta bid it back again or something with a trailer.
But you got on that taxes, they owe the county, the school, and sometimes the state.
Right.
So, you know, that's a, you know, it's.
So nobody knows who's owning, right, that nobody will find.
But if, if the county bids it in, like the piece of property, um, over, um.
Bourbon Street.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that's been kind of a headache, but, um, you know, when I go to school, they tell us, you know, if the county wants to bid it in, that's fine, but it's kind of a headache for counties, but because y'all become responsible for that property, like over there on that street, you know, if somebody wants to get hurt or something over there, y'all liable for that property, so.
So if we liable, do we own?
Y'all, they bid it in or not.
Do, do we liable?
Yeah, y'all bid it in when I child, that, that piece of property was bid it in by the county.
I just want about a tax, I thought, when the county, I just, I.
I think if nobody bids, if nobody bids, it steals whoever owns it originally, is what, that's my understanding of the power, right?
So if, so if they never pay taxes, and never bother with it for a hundred years, still they're wrong?
Well, I thought it kinda on the problem on Bourbon Street.
They do.
But, yeah. You bid it in, you gotta bid it back.
Our trailer ain't nothing but a little trailer, ain't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm lying, I'm lying, I always say.
But I, I just, I, I didn't make the story last night, I'm just asking a question.
But when it's, when it's lying. When it's lying, I always say or lying, either.
Right.
They either make them, or the landowner ends up paying them. Um, or somebody, somebody want land, you know, um, but, um, mobile homes? Yeah, we've got some mobile homes out there that are awful, I mean, I'd be glad to take y'all riding and let you see some of them someday, I've cut pictures in my phone with some of them. And I mean, I mean, I don't know what to do, the landowner could do the abandonment process, but that probably costs more than the mobile home is, you know, so.
I just ask you what?
But, you know, I wish it would be that easy, but it's, you know, it's not.
Like, man, look like you just did the rolling for, to go out there and. What do you want?
I wish it was that easy, if you saw some of the ones, I just, we had good poses.
First, and this. They gave mine.
They laid with mine.
I sent the, the parcel then, and get my dumpster going in, and I'll deal with my money. How best?
All right, you, uh, any more new road business?
What about you, you don't talk about your deal that time? It's three hours, just, I'll be talking about it.
Three of them, I thought it's two, how many two? I mean, I don't got no replacement, oh, that's good. So you don't say something new in old business, or you waiting?
I was gonna ask, how much was all done with two mobile homes, and how far back? Just ballpark. Pretty sure it's more than three years.
Yes.
Now, I think I'm saying one of the.
At, at one of the seminars that I went to, I seem to remember that chattels which mobile home falls under, if I remember correctly, you can only go back legally three years, it doesn't mean you don't try to get it all.
You go back seven, I believe that.
That's something that you could check out, and, you know, if this thing is going back fifteen years or whatever, I seem to remember someone ever that far back, you know, you're talking several thousand dollars, somebody gonna pay you seven thousand dollars for one of those things. But if it was a hundred bucks, it'd be worth it for somebody to go in and scrap it. That's something that the, you know, you can check out very easily, I'm sure.
On one of the mobile homes, I've got four years, and the other one, I've got two years.
What's the amounts?
Um, this is before the fees are in, one is six hundred fifty-five twenty-one, and the other one is a hundred fifty-five twenty-six.
I begin on, I'm trying to find all those other that's scrapped. All right, any other new road business? Uh, Mr. David, reserve the right, reserve the comments?
Oh, sir, I pass, thank you.
Okay. Any reason to go to the second session? Here you are, just leaving this adjournment.